Serious now.
Hello, it's all from the fall.
Oh, we have to say the first day.
It is the first day, summer is gone now, huh?
Yeah. Except we get eight days in one. Um, is the Thursday of fall start at what, fifteen thirty one?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
For the, for the electorals, let's call it autumn.
Minutes.
It is nine AM and I am going to call this meeting of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and its benefit. Um, Cindy, I believe it would be your turn. All right, thank you. Um, item number two, call for public comment. We will still allow individuals to call in if they do not wish to come in person. And those two phone numbers are six oh five, eight eight two, six two four eight, and six oh five, eight eight two, six two nine seven. And we will have all public comment during the open portion of our meeting. And this is for items that is not already on the agenda. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Is there any on the agenda of any of the commissioners today?
No.
All right, item number four, action to approve the September twenties second, two thousand and twenty agenda.
Second.
My gable, second by Van Duzen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the September eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting. Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number six, public hearing on the Cuddington County Five-Year Highway and Bridge Improvement Plan. Um, I don't know, Rick, was there anything that you wanted to mention in relation to that before I open up for a public meeting? I don't know if you want to just come up here and maybe mention that.
Part of the.
Okay, so any of the things that's happened doesn't have any, okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, is there anyone, Lee, online that you can see other than?
No.
Okay.
Is there anyone here specifically for this public hearing? Cause I do need the head to sign a roster. And there's, yeah.
All right, well, I will open up the public hearing on the Cuddington County Five-Year Highway and Bridge Improvement Plan. And seeing and hearing none, I guess, and I will close the public hearing of the Five-Year Highway and Bridge Improvement Plan. Oh.
I don't know, but we should probably have everybody here sign that, just to be.
You think so?
Okay. And just say no comments.
Yes.
Better safe than sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So then there's, you close it, there's no discussion by the board, because there's no action today, right?
So, all right.
Okay.
That takes care of item number six.
Action takes place on the eighth of September.
October.
Uh, yeah, sorry, sixth of October.
Okay.
October sixth is when you'll take action to approve the plan.
Very good, so then at that point, do we, we don't take any public comment anymore then, since we handled that today? Okay. All right, item number seven, the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-one provisional budget. I will open it up to the public at this time then for any comments on our two thousand and twenty-one provisional budget. Seeing no one and hearing no one, then I will close the public hearing portion on the two thousand and twenty-one provisional budget.
Um, we will adopt the budget next Tuesday. And any changes from the way the budget was published will need to be take place by, uh, by motion.
That needs to happen next week when we do.
On Tuesday.
When we adopt it.
Yep.
All right. Monthly reports, we will start with the welfare director, Sarah.
Morning.
Morning, Sarah.
Yeah.
Just wanted to turn that mic on whenever you're ready, just push, yep.
Can you hear me?
Okay, I'll start with the statistics. Um. For July. We had, um. I have extra if you don't have a cup.
There in there.
Okay. Um, July for economic assistance, um, there were sixteen services provided. Economic assistance was one, transportation was one. We had one ESG client, burial, three, homeless, four, medical, six, utilities, seven, housing, eight. And then the next graph just gives you the percentage, uh, just to give you an idea where time was spent. I had to apologize, I don't have the housing part of it, but the economic assistance was half hour, transportation half hour. ESG client was nine point two five, burial was nineteen point five, homeless was forty-three point two five, medical was fifteen. Utilities was six point seven five, and my graph, or my, uh, I had to move my numbers, my lines up, and I cut off the housing part. I don't have that today.
Just a quick question for, for people, so the difference, the difference between homeless and housing.
Homeless.
Just really quickly explain.
Yes, homeless means you're, you're, you're homeless, you don't have a house. Housing is you have an eviction or passed due notice.
Okay.
So you do have a place, but you're at imminent risk for eviction. Homeless, you have nothing, so.
Those percentages that you gave don't coincide with. Are, am I looking at it wrong? Here's your pie.
And I know I had to, um.
There's percentages on these.
I know I had to refresh it, let me resend that, maybe I had printed that off and then I didn't reprint the, the correct. So I will send, I will send the additional, maybe I printed the wrong ones.
So on this first sheet, this is actual number, like one client, is that how you?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so could that one client also be down in some of these other line items as well?
We just report the main thing, not multiple.
Okay, so you don't have.
I don't, so the Excel sheet, I'm not su, I have to put it into a separate column, and I don't know how to do a formula to count multiple and then the names, so, okay.
Well, that's okay, as long as I know that one person isn't under like all these other ones.
No, no, but it's, but keep in mind that there's multiple services that other person can, can be receiving. We just count the main, the main one, so, okay, and then so. Yeah, and I remember I had to refresh that, thank you for bringing that up, I must have printed off the, not reprinted that off. So thank you, Myron, for bringing that to my attention. Okay, so then, um, the next one is, uh, costs and cost avoidance. Neither on medical, they're both, they're just new claims that, that were working. Um, burial, we had, um, cost avoidance of sixty-eight fifty-five and cost of twenty-five seventy-five. Housing, cost avoidance of two forty, utilities, cost avoidance of seven seventy-five, homeless, um, the cost is the hotel, uh, room of the five thirty. And then the savings cost avoidance was four eighty. Lot of times if we have multiple numbers and you don't see a cost avoidance, it's, it's because they weren't, wouldn't have been eligible for our services. Anyways, we still help them with case management, connect other services.
That four eighty, Sarah, is that what it costs us up there for that hotel room?
The five thirty.
The five thirty?
The five thirty, yeah.
So that's an ongoing expense.
Yes, and then, um, just to make you guys aware, there was damage to the, around the county rents, the costs were around fifteen hundred dollars. I have pictures if anybody wants me to email, and then I have, um, the invoice if anybody wants to see, just, anybody want to?
I'd like to see them.
If you want to pick, to see the pictures, just send them to me. Part of our contract, we are not required to cover costs. In both. They've both been charged, there was a couple in there, they have both been charged with intentional damage to property. Uh, Warren is now outstanding for the male, and the female is on the trial stack for November. Um, what I'm asking the board, if no restitution is not ordered, or their owners are unable to collect, then you consider reimbursing some of the costs. And the reason I, I say that is because we want to keep that, that, um, going on that, but not asking that at this time. Again, if you want to see the pictures, um, some of you have, and it's pretty atrocious, so.
It's, it's, it's beyond, I've seen the photos, Sarah, and it's beyond just wear and tear. I mean, this is actually intentional damage to property, there's holes in walls, and, uh, and I know you're not asking for that right now, but when you do, I will be opposed to the county paying this bill.
So a portion of it is for the domestic situation, um, that took place. And the one other, the, the male was actually housed in at the Beacon Center, and then the female was charged. And now those are portions of that, but there's other portions of it was just totally not, not that part of it, so.
Right, okay.
My understanding, the, the state's attorney has charged the full, full thing.
And we have a contract with them for twelve months.
It's, our contract is we just have to give a thirty days on either side, so.
Thirty days.
Yep, on either side on that, but, um. The, both of these individuals, I would say, would probably have the mentality of a sixty-eight-year-old, the male could not read and write. So we're kind of dealing with, what do we do with them? And then they're not from our county, they were dropped off here by somebody, um, and then like the father of the, the female lives in the echo home. So that's really kind of what we were, what do we do? And, and they were there, but a little bit that has changed too with COVID. Um, the owners don't check on the rooms like they used to. So they used to go in and check on rooms, and we've lost that visual with, with COVID. So people are afraid to, to do that, so we would have had a visual prior to that, so.
This was an ongoing situation, this all didn't just happen one, one time, it was ongoing?
They were, they were, um, they were there, I, I want to say about a week and a half. And then the damage as far as from the domestic violence piece of it happened that night, and that included the broken chairs, the, the wind, the, um, there was a, um, door broken. And then a lot of food from the food boxes was thrown around, and the damages that caused, but there was additional, um, things just on pace, living expenses. For example, I'm not going to go into the worst, because that's just beyond. But like, for example, they dumped, uh, grease in the sink, and so in the Saint Cloud, but that they didn't do anything with it, so. And then just, uh, just an inability to communicate, an inability to, literally, you had two children in that, in that place, so.
Is there anything we can do to prevent something like this going into the future as far, as far as some sort of screening or whatever on individual?
Well, we, we do have screenings in place, you know, which they did okay with that. Um, however, uh, what would benefit, for example, so the individual like we had before, we were able to, um. It was high risk as well, we were able to, um, get DSS long-term support services. They went out of there, I mean, they went above and beyond, um, to be able to, um, check in on the, the room daily, of, um, stuff like that. So for us, actually, just even someone from my office being able to go and check on it, make sure, especially for the high, high risk. Cause everybody, almost everybody I would say that we work with in that room is high risk. If we could have had a visual on that, we would have caught it, caught it sooner. As far as the domestic piece, I don't think we could have predicted or prevented that, but we definitely, some of the, the living components of it.
I was talking more about the damage part of it, the other, other part you can't control that, but.
Yeah, I don't know how we would have known that that domestic, nothing, yeah, came up.
I wouldn't say that.
And it is, it is a risk, I mean, they take it on and.
So, so, so without COVID, you would have had the ability to go in and just take, or somebody could have gone and just said, can I see the room, please? And that's part of the deal.
Prior to COVID, um, the hotel had staff, and they had cleaning people, they go in once, uh, once a week, but also could. But if, if, um, if, you know, someone from my office is okay to go down there, we could go check it too, if we know that that's not there. So the, um, hotel does not, um, have, they have very limited staff right now. And then, uh, most of the people on the month-to-month, they don't go in and, and clean those rooms anymore, so that's going to change. So, yeah, it was, I would say it would have been caught sooner had not had the COVID, so. And that's why we did those, um, that's why they would go in there weekly check. If they hear anything, they have the right in the contract to enter the room at any time. You know, if there's anything that they would have picked up on that was suspicious, so. And we've had, like, I want to make two, just, we, we've always had risk, and, and throughout the time, we've had minor damages. And just basically, they've been so good to work with, they just kind of pick it up and, and eat it, you know, um, uh, eat those, those costs, but this is a lot more than that, so. My concern, even if restitution is ordered, neither's, neither of these have any, they don't have anything. And so I just don't think they're going to get compensated, so. But like I said, we're waiting to see on that, um, if it's, um, the one they have the warrant for, for his arrest. And then, um, as far as I know, the Beacon Center was going to get him back to his, his family, he wasn't brought here by his family. Um, so I don't think we'll be able to find him necessarily. And then the other, she's, um, set for trial in November, so I'm a stack, so.
Did you, regarding this bill, did you talk to the owners of the establishment? Do they have some kind of insurance on that? Is there, is there hotel insurance?
That's okay, no, I didn't, I can't.
I mean, I, I don't know this, but it's a question.
I will ask.
Well, and I, you know, I guess, Sarah, when this was originally brought to, to my attention in the email that you had sent, I, I looked at that and, and, um. I thought, well, you know, as a former law enforcement officer, this is above just normal damage. I mean, you know, people spill things on carpets, you know, drains get plugged, that sort of thing. But when you're talking about damage to the structure itself, then that's above and beyond. And, and I understand our, our desire to maintain good working relationships with the hotel, and, and that's fine, but, um, and I'm, and I'm happy that they're being charged criminally. Because that's what needs to be done in this case, I believe. But, um, as far as going after restitution, we can try. If we can't, then maybe we do have to evaluate our need to settle this bill, so that we're maintaining good relations with those folks. But, um, I at least want us to, to attempt to recover the county's losses on this, because, um, that's unacceptable. And we can't have people taking advantage of the county that way.
Yeah, and, and it was an interesting experience for me too, because when I, um, actually called the law enforcement. So when I first got the call, it was Monday, Labor Day evening, uh, I got the call, and, um, it was just, um, because they didn't want to tell security numbers and stuff like that. But then I was kind of told there was minimal damage, so. And then the next day, I had a detective call, and it, it really was minimized compared to when I saw the pictures, I called the detective back. I said, this is, this is definitely minimized, so I need to learn to make sure to get more specifics on that. But then also, even when I had to call to get to file a report, there was resistance. And so I don't, if it wasn't for our state's attorney's office, we were told that we had, I was told by the law, police officer, that I had to do civil. So I'm very thankful, I, I, I'm telling you.
Yeah, no, no, and I, I understand, there, there's a line between civil and criminal, and this did cross that line.
Yeah.
There's no question.
And I, yeah, and I followed up with that, so I was appreciative to have your feedback on that, to make sure, because sometimes it's just you knowing the right language, intentional damage, and the detective helped me with the language to say, this is what we're be, we're being charged, so we're victims. And so it really helped to have that, I wouldn't have that otherwise, and then also this, the state's attorney's office.
And ultimately, the decision to charge, whether or not to, to charge it out criminally is up to Becky in her office. And apparently, she felt that there was enough there, so.
Yeah.
We'll see where it goes.
Yeah.
Well, now, you don't, don't reveal, drop them off, but how would, when you made that comment, they were dropped off, they're not from our county. Um, are we obligated then to take them? Or, you understand what I'm saying, is there, is there any repercussions? Could we go back to where they came from, where, where they sent here by another welfare officer?
No.
Or another entity?
A, a family member of this female drove on here, um, and because the female wanted to be with her dad, which like I said, is, is it, is a group home. Um, we, we could potentially, um, the county or residency, say we had these in, we do have some obligation if there's nothing else, and there was nothing else. And they were sleeping on the, the streets, and so, um. If we want, we could check into the home county to see, to, that's a possibility as well, saying, because these are your resident. But I don't know that they would be obligated for that type of, the damages, well, so.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
Yep, so I can do that as, as well, thank you, guys. I will, I like the, the two, the insurance, um, if there's insurance as well, and I'll check with them.
And, and, and one, one side note, just something to think about, not up for discussion at this point anyway, but all of these items were all used. I look at the refrigerator for a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, that's, uh, not a, you know, maybe that's what the cost new, but. There, there's been some depreciation, and it's used, and that should be taken into account if we're going to pay for, if we're going to help in this situation.
And I did request, I said we would need, if we were to consider, I said, we're not obligated, we would, you know, I would consider, of course, we're going to do the restitution, but we would need receipt. We'd actually need actual cost on that and stuff, so, okay.
And if we leave there, what's going to say, that they can't take that refrigerator that anyone offered it?
Yep, we deal with that a lot.
Just, just up for thought, that's.
Yep, no, and I did on the end, okay, so I'm going to move on, if that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, to, um, just the, the referrals for the agencies. The energy assistance was the highest, um, and that was five individuals. We did, uh, and what energy assistance did is they're actually, um, prov, are you, are you, were utilizing already the twenty, so their season is October twenty, twenty to, to April twenty twenty-one. They, uh, received funding and they just start, they actually implemented that early, normally we don't have that as an option, so that, that came into play. Um, low-income housing was an, one individual, DSS was one individual, ICAP was three in July. And the only reason that was low is because they had some time that they were out of funding in July. Um, we didn't have any for the veteran ESG, Department Labor was two, and the Beacon Center was two. But with the unemployment stuff of that nature, a lot of people were just waiting, so. And then some committee meetings, uh, had the NACO business committee, meeting, we had our health steering committee, just, uh, updates on, um. What I found out is we would get a lot of updates on COVID between NACO and the other committee that I sit on, the NACSA, the National Association County Health Service Administration. And I would forward those to appropriate agencies, and the feedback that I received from them is that when I gave them that information, they were receiving it two, three weeks earlier. And so that gave them ability to be ahead of the game for some of those fundings, um, that they could then apply for. So that's the benefit. Um, we had a Medicaid advisory, uh, ma, uh, Medicaid advisory committee Zoom meeting. What they said is telehealth saw twenty times increase in use in March through May, and the committee is looking at the long-term benefits and feasibility to continue. So there's some good things that come out of that. And also, um, last year, on the health steering committee, we had a resolution to promote the support of opioid addiction in many communities, including Cuddington County, experienced meth. And there was language added to that resolution to include meth and other substance, substances. South Dakota received funding to fight the OB, we had addiction, the first round of funding was for opioid only, but the last grant funding broadened the scope. And current funding now that South Dakota gets will include meth and other addictive substances. So that's some of those values that we bring is just those voices, because otherwise it would have just been specific, um, in the policy and advocating for those resolution. Um, exact, and again, our NACSA board meeting, and then we, we actually have phone calls. It's tapered off about every other week now, and it's valuable information to help with whether the states are doing, what they're experiencing, and especially for the evictions and homeless population. Um, I did present at the Department of Corrections Juvenile Conference on Poverty. Um, just was going to mention, um, I know, um, there's been discussion on the office relocation. I know Todd, Todd and I, we thank you for letting us, um, re, look at other offices. And at this time, based on the cost for the benefits, um, both of us feel that we, we prefer to stay, um, where we're at and maybe do the, um. It'd be less expensive to, to, to some of those renovations on that. I do find people are still confused, some people are going to the WIC office instead of my office, but at least if they show up at the courthouse, it's not as far for them to get there, even if we tell them where we're at, uh, stuff. And then, um, just wanted to mention, um. With, uh, I know there's been discussion on the community's systems of care management. I just wanted to share, if the office, what I did was if it was some thousand dollars, this is what my office could provide for that. Thank you. Um, basically, the welfare office, you know, we are providing what we consider the warm handoff the best we can, um, with phone calls and transferring and following up. But what we're not doing is outreach and peer support. The additional hours, if, if you were, went with the route of adding additional hours for current, current employee, it would enhance services and fill gaps, but not duplicate. Oftentimes, there's a wait time in service for, um, for services, or there, oftentimes, these are individuals that we're working with that need multiple services and multiple systems long-term. And that can be overwhelming to an individual, so we can improve the outcomes by helping individuals navigate the various systems and help them with the paperwork. Uh, we can also fill a gap by providing case management until a person is connected to long-term support services. I do believe utilizing current employee will increase continuity of care, not shifting from one person to another. So when you have multiple people doing cases, you have to explain where it's at, cover it, you'd have the same person throughout. But, um, increasing the current employees' hours will allow that individual access to benefits. So it's kind of saying before we help others, we can set, um, set a benef, set an example and help in general first. In the long run, this benefit will give stability to the current position we have, because employees are more likely to stay in the long run, um, which would potentially reduce, uh, turnover. Cause employees are more likely to stay in the long run, um, which would potentially reduce uh, turnover. My office does look at all resources. There's about eight resources. People move to poverty. Poverty is not the only, just the one financial piece. There are also, I do have money in uh, my budget for professional services this year. That uh, I did reach out to, her name is Erin, Erin Sirtzka. She is currently Community Projects Director at USD Sanford. Prior to that, she worked for Minnehaha County and did a lot of their uh, stuff for Stephanie.
She's still, she's still doing a lot of.
Yeah, she's, yeah, and um, she could do, uh, could provide for about between the cost of two to five thousand. Depending on the spoken deliveries, do some work to look at what, what you're looking at, what the needs are and how to best address it. Um, on that, and she could actually do that work November, December. And that, that would give you guys the ability to take a look, um, to see. You know, or what are you wanting to do and, and would it accomplish this? And, and also look at grants and other opportunities. I have reached out to Travis Parker with Policy Research. But you know, he was, he was gone. We have a phone call tomorrow to see what they could look at. That might, it seems a very affordable way for the county to look to see, is this really what you're wanting? The reason I mentioned that too is just, I know the cost of the deflection program and that was fifteen years, but that was less than, than the additional. So we could target maybe some, what you wanted to do and accomplish.
So quick, a couple of questions. I'm sure the question. Oh, so I see you have seventeen and a half hours as opposed to the nineteen, the nineteen dollars we've been discussing.
What I did on this one, and I do have the proposal if you did the nineteen, but this is what, what it would be if it was the twenty-eight thousand. Um, that was added. The big, biggest deliverables would be, um, do an adherence to ethical standards. Develop a peer support program, because that's a gap that we don't have and you really need. And that will multiply, um, services throughout. And then I just gave some numbers on the case management and that would need to be reviewed. Um, but I want to make it clear, like, when you're doing like twenty cases of regular case management, those can sometimes uh, go quickly, can be a week, two weeks, depending on that. But this one just looked at if it was the twenty-eight thousand, would that.
Okay, so putting it into that number.
Yeah, so I looked at the dollar amount and then instead of the hours on that.
I need to ask a question on the seven, is that seventeen and a half hours per week? Yes, total. I don't think she qualifies for benefits.
If you had the additional, she's already nineteen.
Okay, that's what I could, if it is additional, okay.
She's already nineteen.
Okay, this is an addition to what she's already, okay, alright, okay, thank you.
So in this.
The cheapest would be.
So this pays, so this pays for a social worker or, or?
Case, case manager can be a social worker as well, yeah, either way.
So she's.
She's not, she does have, um, she has experience with human services, our human service agency with rec services. And she has an accounting, an accounting degree. Um, what I have found is when individuals have that accounting background, they're better balanced when they're doing services. So that's, that's.
So she'd be getting twenty-six and a half hours a week.
Nineteen plus, yes.
Making sure.
Um, nineteen plus what?
Seventeen and a half, thirty-six. Oh, thirty-six, sorry.
Thirty-six, okay.
Whoops, yeah, forgot to carry the one.
Okay.
That's a math.
Public math here. Um, so, so that, it's now that we're talking about this particular thing, Matt Scherius, this, this would be one of the things that. When next week, when we talk about the budget, this would be something that we'd have to amend the budget for. So this is the, so Sarah's fleshing out, you know, the option that we, that I think I touched on two weeks ago. So it'll be between like adding hours to the current parting employee or doing a contract with ICAP. And the, the cost is roughly the same. So, so we'd have to look at adding that to the budget. So that's just sort of, we knows that's what this means.
Either way, it would fit into the welfare, whichever direction we would go and put it in that budget.
So the, the main, the main step is to decide that the budget for, and you know, if it works out, that maybe we can do something still this year with some money that's left. Okay, right.
And I still would recommend just having, like, like Erin or somebody outside to take a look to see where we can get the best benefits and, and the gap so that we know.
Does she, does she have like a proposal or something on, uh, with deliverables or she?
We, we'd have to put together the scope and deliverables and that's still kind of, I'm not clear on what you guys are, would, would be wanting. And then, um, I have a phone call this week with Travis Parker from Policy Research. He's the one that did the SIM workshop to see what they have for options. I do know that peer support is been, been proven very effective and affordable. And that would actually, for me, like, when you talk about the hotel room, I'd have somebody, because you have somebody walking with them and stuff. So, um, I, I would, uh, and that is definitely a gap that we have. A lot of times what happens for like example, this, this homeless people or that we work with. They get bored, even though we've got the paperwork, we need, they need some healthy interactions, some, so that somebody walk with them. So they can have that emotional ability to, to withhold, um, those old behaviors. You know, and, and someone to walk with that, that's been there to encourage them, just like AA does and, and, and drug courts and all that. And you just don't really have that.
And I think those are the same opportunities that ICAP would deliver as well. They have caseworkers and do this. Um, the thing is, is to have someone do a study, I don't know until we would kind of get into this, that we would be able to study anything. I don't think we have a clear picture on some of this. So I don't know what we, what benefit it would be until we would get rolling to see. Kind of compare then as to where we are and where we go. And is this, uh, is this something that should continue, so?
Your phone, is it, sorry, has Erin done a study like this for another county or another jurisdiction?
Yeah, for her county and she could do a data analysis, so she said as well, so, um, we could take the data in that we, we do have her at that.
But I don't know if that would be a clear picture. Anyway, all right.
I, that's everything I have.
We can jump down to number sixteen while you're here.
Thank you.
Um, actually to approve the LATC student job shadow in the welfare office.
Okay, um. Did you guys all get the copy of the agreement? You emailed it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, the state's attorney, Tom Burns, he, he didn't see any issues with that. He looked it over. Um, and then I do also, they would have to, uh, sign a community, uh, or confidential agreement stuff to be able to do, to do that, so.
So can I, can I elaborate on this? So this kind of came up, we were talking about this, the thing, uh, I visited the instructor. Um, at the community health worker instructor at LATI or LATC. Um, as a result of our discussion about the systems of care. And we found that, well, these interns, they, they only work for, they don't work year-round and they're not available year-round. So, so this is, but it is a good opportunity to help LATC build that kind of expertise in the community. So this would be basically, you know, it doesn't cost us anything. It's just kind of helping, uh, LATC with this, this is a, this is a new program. Um, it's only a couple of years old. And so we're trying to, LATC is trying to, trying to grow it. It's big in some states. It's this, the community healthcare working specialty is big in some states, but it's not really taken off in South Dakota yet, so.
So the challenge, um, is that a lot of, like in Minnesota, you can get a certification for this type in sixty days versus the two-year degree. So some of the discussion we had with Lake area was in that they're working on is if you do this, you get your two-year, um, uh. Degree, associate's degree, that you can still fluidly go into a four-year if you want to pursue later. The community service workers is really growing, um, finding it to be effective and affordable way to help people. That is a little lower level service than like a nurse and you see these in nursing homes, um, uh, and hospitals and stuff. Now they're, the benefits of that, so, yeah.
I would add, yeah, thanks to Carrie Johnson for bringing it to us, our attention at that behavioral health meeting. It was her, her mentioning this fact that it's kind of got rolling.
Yep.
Um, did I see in there, it's like a two-week, two-week for each student, I missed two students, so it'd be four weeks.
So there's just job shadowing, so not really an internship, so.
Correct, yeah, yeah. It's not the level of.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
I oppose that motion, Carrie's.
Alright, thanks, Sarah. Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to our facilities manager. Good morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, everybody.
Get a few more keys, Steve.
Well, there is a lot more keys. I don't have all the courthouse keys on here.
Oh, okay.
It'd be about a ring about that.
Throw your pants down. You gotta get a, need to get a bigger pad.
This works fine. Okay, um, we'll start with the courthouse. Um, finally got full maintenance staff and everybody working. Um, they had set up, um, boating booths here a week ago and now in function stuff. And it sounds like Cindy says it's been kind of busy.
It's been brisk.
Um, and of course, if anybody has noticed, handicap rat in the back, the parking lot has been finished. Looks well done, so. Yep, well, well done. Um, go to the detention center. Um, there's been a little bit of phone line issues with the fire alarm. There was all line that was disconnected. It was causing a little issue out there. Hopefully that gets fixed soon. Um, been having a little trouble getting the electrician to come in to run a new line. And so that, um, so.
We can blame Jamie for that.
We can blame Jamie for that. Um, uh, water heaters backward, I did find out today, I guess they are finally in. So I don't know, I imagine installation will be soon on that. Um, egg building, uh, egg building, there's been a couple of meetings and a few auctions going on there. And starting today, they're going to start removing the tile in the hallway and in the kitchen. And next week, putting the epoxy, um, in the floor on that. Um, and then with the park, they will do the epoxy in the park also next week. In the Cubesca Hall and then a little patch that was left in the office that needs to be finished. And otherwise, the park has been pretty full from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Um, car show went very well. There was about sixteen that had been booked that didn't show up. The walls contacted them, um, to see if they wanted to forward it on to next year. They assumed that it was just automatically going to be forwarded. Um, they had been sent out either email or letter that they needed to notify park managers, but did not. They weren't aware. They either missed the envelope or their letter or whatever, but they did get hold of pretty well everybody.
So that was an extra service that they did because they really didn't.
Yep, they went on and blonde, so they didn't want to run into an issue next year, so. Um, I have just gotten some quotes here, just received today for some roofing projects that, that would budget it for this year to get done on the park. Um, I'll present that next week. Plus, there's some repairs of some, um, damage from the storms about. I'll talk to Cindy on that and I'll with that, with, because I know there was some insurance money for repair on some of that too, so. Um, do, 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 we'll go down to the weed. Um, we have probably nearly, uh, probably by the end of the day, about a, a third of the townships have been, will be sprayed. Um, state roads, the state roads. Um, the truck has been run on the shoulder except for just east of Watertown, needs to be running two twelve yet. Hopefully can beat the, the mowers, because they are aggressively mowing right now. They've got West two twelve and, um, West, uh, Highway twenty complete, so. Um, hopefully we can beat the mowers on that. They've been working pretty aggressively. Uh, county roads only have a couple left on that to complete. And. That handles pretty well the spraying into things. Hopefully the weather holds out. It's been, sounds like not too bad for the rest of this week. Um, UTV needs to be ran though on the state roads if, if we get a chance to get out there and run it along the shoulders, around, along the fence lines and stuff like that. Um, one thing that was noticed on the right-ofways that I've noticed, talked to probably about four or five other counties. They have noticed a high, um, um, influx of, uh. Of Canadian thistle in the right-ofway, um, lot of new patches, real, um. I know we've been using a lot more chemical this fall than we probably have in the past. And they have been all seeing the same thing too, which would bring to the issue to watch out for next year. When they start coming back, because you know, they are perennial, so.
Yeah, I've noticed a lot of Canadian thistle popping up.
Right, a lot of them, you know, must be their new establishments or just probably some of it is due is some of the chemical wearing off from, from previous times too, so.
Lot of weather too.
Yeah, a lot of wind blowing around. Um, this past week, the South Dakota State Weed Commission met at the Extension Building. Um, the topic there that mostly was, is the, about meeting criteria of the grants. For one is because of the COVID, if for holding district meetings, for holding, um, state conference. Of if they have, the requirement is to get full grant dollars. You have to have two participating at the, at these meetings. And there's been a lot of concern of if they're going to be able to get to people because of the COVID. Um, issues right now, they're leaving it stand. If they need to have emergency meeting, they'll put emergency meeting to change some of those criterias, so. Also, the following day had the weed tour. We had started out the weed tour, left. Uh, went up to Waverly to the wind towers, um, probably about thirty people that was in the group. Um, very interesting discussion on with the wind towers. Um, a lot of questions was asked. In order to keep the schedule going, I kind of says, well, we should get going. And the other one says, no, we got more questions to ask. So, well, we left on and we kind of shortened some things at other sites. From there, we went to test plots that was at the research farm. There was some in of, uh, uh, Canadian thistle, leafy spurge, um, Russian or, or spotted nap weed. Um, test plots that was done of treatments. Um, some varied from two-four D to other variations of, of, uh, chemicals that was used. And then we finished off of the, of seeing all those sites at about one or two o'clock. From there, part of the group, we went to Niklet Tower and CT Howell were kind of a sightseeing. Um, of the end of the day, so. Color was just starting at CT Howell, but you know, in another week or so, it'd been great. But we kind of walked around and seen some things, you know, it's been probably twenty-five, thirty years ago since I've actually been to CT Howell. So it was kind of nice, cool to go in there again and see it, so. And then West Nile, um, pretty well, we've kind of more or less wrapped up. I did get a call from, from Wallace here this past week. They thought to high influx of mosquitoes, but. They said it was on Tuesday evening and I, we had let a biocontrol release out by Long Lake. Um, what majority of everything was, was there was a huge flush of sand flies, notorious. I mean, you couldn't even walk, it was like going through a cloud. So I think that was probably the biggest influx. They were going to let me know to see how things were the rest of the week, but I hadn't, they hadn't called back and so they had, so. But otherwise, um, I've sent all the invoices out to them because of the grant. Uh, of their grant dollars to get reimbursed. They need to get this soon. Um, it's not due until the end of November, but at least they can get the process for them to get for reimbursements. But give stats, I guess, of West Nile in the United States. As of last week, um, Tuesday, there was eighty-one cases in the whole United States so far in West Nile, which is considerably down. And South Dakota, um, five. Um, no deaths have been reported for West Nile, but we don't know. We're all, you know, there might be put in other categories, let's put it that way. No, actually, the, the five were spread out, was Minnehaha, Brown. Um, I think there was one that was out west and then in the central part of the state. But it was pretty, it's pretty small. This is probably the lowest numbers. That's probably been since, since West Nile, has been really since two thousand and three, so. Yep.
Thank you.
Be my luck.
Oh, I do have one. Yes, I have one more thing I would like to add to your, um, your report. Um, my wife and I actually paid a visit out to Memorial Park over the weekend and, and we actually did some walking around the park a little bit and on the trails and stuff. And, um, I paid a visit to, to all the restrooms in the park and I. And I have to commend the staff out there, the walls for the work that they're doing. Bathrooms were spotless. I mean, they were, they were good. They were in great shape. And you know, when you go into a public restroom, a lot of times it's, what am I gonna find?
Right.
And, uh, and, and, and they were very clean. I was very happy to see that, so please tell them thank you, they're doing a good job.
A year ago, they, they bought a seat three machine, the same thing that we have at the Extension Building. The, that machine is very, very well to keep bathrooms very clean. Um, noticed that even at the Extension Building after using that. Yeah, the bathroom's just, it, it really cleans it up better, a lot better than running them off and everything.
I mean, you could tell that the countertops have been wiped off and stuff and, and that's, they were clean, so.
One thing I will update, so we had on the park, it's, I did have in the notes here. Um, probably this winter gonna look at updating some of the policies out there. I know we've had a few issues this summer, so we're gonna update on some policies out there kind of. And stuff, one of the things probably gonna do is have to make a policy and get the, get a policy board put out there so people can at least visually see policies, rules.
Yeah.
Rules.
Uh, how about the flag situation? Is that taken care of?
That is, yeah, the, the, the party has left, that has gone down. So yeah, but yeah, that's one of the things that we need to issue and so that. Another thing is, is stuff is, one of the things I'll bring up and that would probably be like, um, four-wheelers, um, so I probably need to put in there that they need to be a license.
Yeah, there was one running around the park out there on Sunday without a license plate on it. Wasn't licensed to be on the road.
Probably not so much that, it's just that probably too young of the, too young operators, right? Need the.
Operators need to be a certain.
Should be. I'll discuss a little more with that, probably with Brad and the State's Attorney and Natalie.
I think it should be similar to what the state parks are and then it has to be a licensed vehicle, the operator has to, you know, be age to operate the vehicle. Because actually I think Brad, the roadways inside the state parks are considered like state roadways. So it's the same, same laws that apply to the state parks. Maybe we need to adopt something like that.
Right.
Just for the safety of everyone.
It's more or less safety, yup.
If there'd be an accident. Yeah, sounds good, so we can move on then to item number.
Can you bring that up? I forgot to turn around, my, which thing? The quote.
The injection system, yeah, number fourteen, we're gonna move that to actually purchase, upgrade the injection system. We need to part spray truck.
Let's scroll in there. Maybe the, our. That's what you asked. Fourteen, okay, so still.
Fourteen.
It's. There we go, those two.
There we go. Yeah.
Um, this here is to, um, upgrade again on another truck. Uh, last year we upgraded another one. The injecting system, of course, um, they have notified us probably almost probably six years ago that they were gonna discontinue the other systems and no, and they were not be producing any parts. Um, here as probably two years ago, they said there was no parts available. So in order to the upgrade, I need to upgrade the equipment. Um, it's be pretty hard when something breaks down.
It's in your budget too.
That was a budgeted item. I have projected budgeted for this year and next year.
Motion by Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Waterman. My other question, so what about the, so you're just upgrading the current one that is not really a trade?
Yup, it's not a trade-in. There's really, I asked them about value and they said it's really no trade-in. I'm actually, what it is, is you're, I'm still using the frame, the tanks. It's just the pump and the motor is, you know, no longer. Serviceable.
Right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, you know, so then we can move on to, um, Highway Superintendent for monthly report.
Good morning. First thing I have is, uh, a person from the state stopped this morning. That's in charge of the bridge up north of Calon County Road four. There will be a, uh, change order of twenty-eight thousand dollars and twenty dollars. They had to build a cofferdam, de-water and buy material to, there was a change.
That's a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase, not a reduction, right?
Yeah. I saw that, I saw that the other night. Yeah, they, uh, it looked like quite, it's quite a cofferdam. Yup, yeah, and they just brought that to me this morning, so I'll have that for next week.
Doesn't seem like there's that much water going through there.
No, but they had to de-water everything and.
Yup.
So, yeah, it's, it is what it is, so.
I was amazed, uh, not amazed, but I see they took out the former bridge deck, shut it off in the past, cause over there.
Yup.
What was the total cost of that project? So this change order is under the amount that where we would need to go and.
The total was nine hundred and.
Okay.
Some odd thousand.
We're fine, yeah. Pretty sure we're fine, yeah.
Yup.
If it's a certain percentage of the total project, uh, we are actually, I think, supposed to rebid, but I'm sure this falls under. Under that amount, they would care.
At this point, there's no.
Engineer should know, yeah.
It's gone.
Yeah.
They're already putting the new one in there, so.
That cofferdam they're putting in around there, under this twenty-eight thousand dollar. That steel they put down, do they rent that steel? Does that, does that, are we buying that steel? They own that?
Because they, they do quite a deal. They're working on one here and one in Brooklyn. So they jockey stuff back and forth, cause this outfit is from Minnesota.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars, the amount of cofferdam steel if they've got there doesn't seem like.
Yeah, and you see that, this was, uh, dirt and steel and other materials, materials was, uh, I think you told me it was like three thousand dollars.
Yup.
And, uh, yeah, because, uh, they had labor to build the cofferdam, de-watering and materials was three thousand dollars, so.
Okay, so this is directly related to soils, utilities or unknown conditions directly affecting the performance of the work. Is that?
Yup.
Okay, so it does not have to be rebid, okay?
After looking at the project and seeing modification, I'm surprised it's only twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, it was, it was enough to begin with, so, yeah, it was. But, and it's, if the pro, it, it's slow going when they start.
The dollar amount threshold would be seventy-five thousand at least on a project costing this much. So as long as it's under that, we do not have to rebid. And is it a cumulative? Yes, okay, to the project, so. Hopefully, hopefully this is the only one we'll have, but.
Yeah.
We are well with, under the, under the threshold for.
Like I said, they've, they've got cement poured and.
Why did, why did bridges take so long?
You're asking the wrong guy. Seems like it's slower than what.
Yeah, yeah, cause usually things never work the way you plan.
Yeah. So that's, that's a big part of it. Yup, yup. Um, we started our fall mowing yesterday. And, uh, we've only got two mowers going at the current time. One of them, we had to wait for parts. That's, there's always something broke down, so. That should be going today, so we'll have all three of them going tomorrow. We're working on graveling County Road eight-two where the feedlot is that was damaged this spring. We've got gravel, we're gonna gravel the whole two miles and we've got pit run the hall. There's a couple soft spots down in the bottom where there's water on both sides. We're gonna haul pit run in there to build that up about a foot to try and stabilize that and then gravel over the top. So that, that'll be completed. Um, we're still working on County Road eight-one, a mile north of there, back to the west. There's four spots that we've been working on all summer, but we're not leaving until it's done now. We had other things to do. And hopefully, depending on the weather, there's two more spots west of there in the next mile. So we'll be able to open that road up before winter. We're not gonna do anything with it until the other spots are done and we have other things to do, but the people on the east end can get out, the people on the west end can get out. It's a few more miles, but we plan on building that up right now. People are still using it, it's muddy, there's ruts in there. I would not advise anyone to go through there because it's just making it worse for us. But, uh, if we don't get a bunch of rain or something, we're planning on building up. So our motor grader can get through there, the bus can get through there.
That would be good.
So that's, it's coming.
Yeah.
It's just.
That's that spot where I was with you and somebody drove through it, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, yup, there is, the water has went down. It's eight-one, yes. Yup. Yeah, it'd be right, right by Stink Lake.
Yup.
Yup, there's a bowl landing there and it's just a little past that. And then, uh, there's game land on the south side that, uh, there's a parking area. They'll be able to use that once we get it done, but until then, it's, ruts are over a foot, so.
You do have it.
The road is closed.
Yeah, it's barricaded now.
So, but um, we've completed our spot graveling where all the mud spots were from the spring. That was a slow process, but, uh, we've still got a lot of gravel to haul, so people just gotta be patient. Farmers are starting to get in the fields, combining beans and corn. Just a reminder that if you drag mud out onto the road, clean it up. Because last year we had an incident on two twelve where a small car plowed into one of those big chunks and damaged the whole front end. They could have been seriously hurt. Because there's a lot of traffic out there that don't understand that there's stuff in the road that you gotta go around or stop for it, but that's, that's your responsibility to clean that up.
Um, Rick and I have been working up by the wind tower areas, so hopefully get some of them roads.
Yeah, that's.
Back into shape.
Interesting. That's.
We're working on it, so.
Yup, yes, we are. That's about all I have right now for my monthly report, so.
All right, we have several things on the agenda for you today then. Uh, number nine is action to authorize the chair to sign agreement for one sixty-eighth street grade raise project.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, got a motion by.
Second.
Second by Van Dezen, any discussion?
Can, could Rick just give us a summary of everything? This, this is on County Road eight-two.
That's why you just talked about.
We were talking about.
That's the same too, okay.
Yeah.
Yup.
The one.
There's about twenty-six hundred feet there that, uh, Clausen and Sons got the bid for. They have, uh, already built the grade and, uh, have a fabric put on it.
They've started on the truck, yeah, so it's just.
We awarded a bid on September eighth.
And I've got the notice receipt that's laying on my desk to give to you, but, uh, they've, yeah, they pulled in and they were able to get material right on the end of it and, uh, build it up. So it, it went pretty fast.
Yeah.
That's fantastic. Yes, it is.
Do we have a motion and second or any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Hopefully this will be the last time.
Item number ten, opening of bids for riprap installation and action to award a bid.
This is from Clausen and Sons.
A bid sheet disappeared. Did you take it?
Here, I've got extra because we only have, we only have two bids, one for each project, so.
Multiple sheets for that one?
I don't know, I had them here.
Sixteen of them here, so.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, and there is, uh, bid bond. Okay, and the amount is two hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars.
Say it again, please. Do you say that amount again, please?
Two hundred twenty-two, five seventy. And that is the only bid that we have for the riprap.
Make some motion to accept the bid.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Did you have an estimate on this project?
It was around that two hundred, two, between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so we're right in there then, that's good.
Yup.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. We'll move on then to item number eleven, opening of bids for the culvert installation and action to award a bid.
And there was only the one for that?
Yup.
Okay, and this is from Deutsch Excavating.
And they're out of?
Watertown.
Once again, this is for a culvert installation.
Yes, this is in between, uh, Goose Lake and Pelican on our County Road seventeen-five. This is the one that, uh, Clark Engineering drew up the plans and, uh, did the study on it to come up with what we needed for the culverts. And the bid price is thirty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-six cents.
Is there a bid bond?
Yes, there is. Sorry.
Give us that amount again, Rick, thirty-two?
Thirty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-six cents.
Do you remember what you maybe estimated this at?
This, see, there was a combination, the county bought the pipe. And the pipe was between eighteen and nineteen thousand. And this part was.
Installing.
Yup, this is just to install it. And, uh, we, we have riprap at our shop that, cause there was only like twenty-five ton. I told them they could use that. And then, uh, the top two feet of material will be re-ground material that will come from our shop. Alls they have to do is place it, because that way this will not get asphalted this year. So this stuff stays pretty good, so.
Give it a chance to settle if it's.
Yup.
Just for everybody's information, I think was that culvert? What's the diameter of that one?
The one that was there or the ones that we're putting in?
There's two more, yeah.
There's three.
Oh, yeah, three, yeah.
There's three that'll be thirty-six inch pipe.
Three thirty-six inch?
Yup, concrete pipe.
Any other question? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that from Deutsch Excavating, the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars.
All right, got a motion and a second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, I think that is all for you, right, Rick?
I hope so.
I could see. All right, very good, thank you.
And I will get going on these to see when we can get contracts and stuff, when these guys can get started.
And we're running out of season, aren't we?
Yup, I, uh, talked to pipe manufacturer yesterday and the pipe was all completed except for the ends, so.
How, how long were these pipes?
Fifty-four feet, I believe, right in there. So there, what they'll do is they'll, currently there's no water running through those. There's one culvert there that's a twenty-four inch pipe and there's no water running through there now. And they'll put these in and then they'll take the, the one out that's there. So that one will be eliminated and it'll just be the three new pipe. So hopefully we can get it installed before any more water comes up, so.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. The line of sky, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to add in a monthly report from the sheriff since he is here today. We'll switch that to prepare for a couple other items.
Promise I'll make it quick.
Time's up.
This is Brad's normal day to.
This is Brad's normal day to report or normal week to report because he has a meeting in the middle of the month.
It's not like Christie sent me that. We didn't see it on the agenda, but.
Yeah, I didn't see the agenda, so I'll pull it up. If you got her there. Jump on down. Everybody's got the sheet there, we'll start with the monthly balance sheet for month of August twenty twenty. Uh, the balance was seven thousand five hundred ninety five dollars. Sheriff's fees collected was six thousand four hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents. And warrant fees for five hundred twenty five dollars for a grand total of seven thousand five dollars and fifty cents. Grand total of five eight nine fifty again. And then that one's. If you jump to the next page there. You can see, I missed last month's, so you can see July and August there, as we go through them, I'll just read off on August, everybody can see July's. Cases and calls, deputies responded to seven hundred and thirty five calls in August, you can see, if you look a year ago, five hundred and eighty five. It's definitely been a lot busier this last fall, this, I should say, this fall and this past summer here. Uh, things been a lot busier. Accident reports, we did four accident reports, warrants served eighty four. Hundred and seventy four civil papers were served. And three thousand one hundred and sixty transport miles. So you can see that's getting a lot busier as well. Looking at the civil process side, we are starting to see the COVID response a little bit. Um, just a little few numbers here on executions from my civil deputy that we work on. On executions in August, we took in fourteen that we have to work. Um, so far, as of yesterday, September first to September twenty first, we've taken in fifty five executions so far. Um, an execution, just for those that don't really know what that is, that's where the sheriff has to go in and levy on property for somebody that has a civil judgment against them. Have a sheriff sale and sell that property, so you can see that those numbers are creeping up a lot, so. That was as of yesterday, so. Uh, if we jump on down to the middle. We'll see some jail numbers there, our average daily population for August was forty point three nine. Our low ADP was thirty five, our high was forty six, see those two numbers are switched around there. Um, on scram bracelet, we had one. Zero people on the PBTs. Um, twice weekly UAs, we had forty six people. And four people in the sweat patch and we had two hundred and eighteen bookings for the month of August. If you scroll on down to the bottom. You see on the booking numbers are kind of staying the same COVID or no COVID. Yeah, staying pretty, pretty average. Out of county contracts, we collected ten thousand two hundred and ten dollars, uh work release zero because we haven't had work release since March. Um, twenty four seven fees, one thousand five hundred and eleven dollars are collected. And scram fees that were collected were three hundred and twenty six dollars. Any questions on those numbers before we jump on to the next thing here?
Yeah, a question for Matt, how many people do we have from our county right now? No, that's fine, I'm just curious.
I do like to see those jail numbers, so. Just to keep them there.
It's a lot, exactly, it's a lot easier to manage. When we're sending these numbers, so.
Brad, we anticipate executions continuing to rise.
Yes, I, I envision those to continue to rise and um unfortunately. Possibly, I have not seen that yet, but on the foreclosures, the mortgage foreclosure, but I'm guessing those could increase as well. So, looking at the executions, executions and mortgage foreclosures can go hand in hand in times, so.
So you go to the house and you hand in the papers and say. You haven't made your payments. And these are the orders for you to cease and desist or vacate the grounds.
Yep, and that'd be eviction, um, the mortgage foreclosure, similar, have made the payments to the bank, you work with the bank. Set up a foreclosure sale, we can sell that. Then we'll have to be eviction on top of those, and they have six months after the mortgage foreclosure to uh move out.
Well, hopefully you won't have to. Practice your auction.
They do have skills too much, the six month redemption period.
Yeah, that's the one thing that, that people need to understand, it's not that. You know, you arrive and we expect the other, we're pretty lenient, six months.
Yeah.
So, I mean, some people might even take advantage of that.
Some, some do, um, they're like, see, there is a six month redemption period on a mortgage foreclosure that they can work with the bank and.
Yeah.
Get their property back, so, and sometimes they, they do do that, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a sad process.
Um, I just want to touch base on Ecare, Avera Ecare, um, I don't think I've shared that. I haven't had an opportunity to share that with you guys yet, um, it's a pilot program. I was funded by a grant by Helmsley Charitable Trust. We got, essentially what we got is we got ten iPads for the deputies. When you respond to a person that has a mental health issue or a mental health crisis. They can use their CIT skills, help de-escalate the situation, to get that person, so they're not combative and, you know. De-escalated that situation, um, we can call up what we like to call Doctor in a Box. Um, you guys have heard me say that a few times before, we call up Avera, there's a, on twenty four seven, there's a. A counselor that's available to talk and kind of work with this person, so. Um, three AM on a Saturday night and we're dealing with Lee, like usually is an example a lot of things. You're welcome, Lee. We're dealing with Lee at three AM and um we de-escalate the situation, we can. Power up our iPad, call up Avera, um, within twenty, thirty minutes, you know, they. Like to have a little lead time too, if they're gonna get woke up. But then they'll work with them as well, they'll create a safety plan with this person and help kind of, um, kind of get a safety plan for that. Stats, Minnehaha's been using this for about a year now, some of the stats are, it was eight or nine out of ten people that. Have gone through this Avera Ecare are cleared on the scene and they don't have to get brought in. So that's less people in our facility, which is always a good thing. And less transport time for the deputies and less time to taking people to Inkton, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the good thing with this is it's not cutting out Human Service Agency here in town. Once this is complete, we complete our session with Lee, uh, we got all that information. Avera actually contacts Kerry Johnson and Human Service Agency for follow-up, so. Human Service Agency will follow up with these people the next day. Um, and, and continue services if needed from there, so. Like I say, it is a pilot program here, uh, it is something that, there's a handful of sheriffs across the state that are involved with this. Partnered with UJS on this as well.
Is that something that's done in the cab of the car?
It, it can be done in the car, it can be done in their house, it can be done standing outside in the snow, it, it.
As long as you got a wifi connection.
Actually, that's part of the program as well as each iPad comes with wifi. Yep.
Fantastic.
Trained and using that as a Thursday of last week, so.
I, I was involved in this recently. I forget what, it was. In the afternoon, late in the afternoon. And then uh HSA came down, did an interview. And then they talked to me, because I do the individual. And uh rather than spending the night. We were able to uh. Put them back in their own time. With uh, they happen to have a caretaker staying with them. And so I would diffuse the situation and didn't add to a night in our facility.
Yep, yep, that's our goal is to cut down on.
Worked very, worked, worked very, very well, I just happened to know the individual for many years. We've happy to get involved.
It's off the top of my head, I think during. Late year period, we had around a hundred individuals that spent time in our facility that were non. Um, they were not charged, so they were there for mental health status, either something that they. Safe room was full or um maybe they're a little combative or something, but our goal is to try to keep them out of our facility.
One of the hardest things I, I would have to do as a law enforcement officer was go to a uh suicide threats call. And uh have to take someone to the jail. Because they were contemplating taking their own life, that's the last place you want to put them, and so. If we can keep them out of there, I think that's great, and I think that, that, you know. Um, we're taking steps to do that with the CIT training and programs like this, I think we're on the right track, so.
And this doesn't replace the CIT, it complements it, so.
Right.
You can de-escalate the situation, then they're more susceptible or more. Uh, willing to actually.
The real winners on this, I think, are going to be the smaller agencies, yeah, um, they're more rural than Cottington.
Don't have to transport seventy five miles to a facility.
Now, uh, question, all the deputies have been trained and are using it, what about the Watertown Police?
They have not been trained, like say it's a pilot program, um, if they.
So it's just the county.
Just the county, um, if we can go over and assist them. Um, like I say, it's for a year to kind of see how the progress is, if it's working, um, if it, you know, how, how good it is. We're gonna keep track of all those numbers.
I think the grant is just for county, uh, county.
Sheriff's.
Sheriff's offices starting out and then they might expand it if.
The rural focus, I think, is what's.
I'll thank you for jumping aboard and, and I'm, I'm anxious and excited to see how it all turns out.
Yep, yeah, there's, there's, there's getting to be so many alternatives out there and this case was. This party.
Yep.
And uh, then they were able to then go back to their residence. And uh, talked to them yesterday and they were just fine, yep, but uh. Sometimes we all say things spur of the moment and uh. We have to take them seriously, yep.
And that's where the CIT training that we often talk about comes into play. Uh, we can help decipher that, so we don't even have to take them in sometimes, depending on what was said and the actions that will happen, so. That's traumatic when somebody has to be brought into your facility, yep.
All right.
Okay, okay.
Set off for your monthly report, do we want to move on?
Um, yep.
Good. Any other questions for Brad? All right, let's move on then to item number twelve, action to approve purchase of an automated kiosk for twenty four seven PBT testing.
Well, like I say, uh, COVID seems like it's a topic every Tuesday up here with everybody. Um, since COVID has started beginning of March, twenty four seven, it was initially shut down altogether. Twenty four seven program, uh, several months ago, we did reinstate the urine analysis side of the. Twenty four seven program and um, we can do that safely by masking and sanitizing. We have a bathroom that's not in the middle of jail now, remodeled, and we have a bathroom where they can just step into and go on. So we, it will do that safely. Um, of course, the PBTs, the breath test, that's not something that we can do safely with, with what we got there. Uh, we've looked at this, different options here, there's a kiosk here. That we've checked on, there's a company here, uh, Precision Kiosk Technologies, several states that use it. In order for us to get the permission to go ahead and use this, we had to reach out to the Attorney General's Office and get the approval from them. Um, I know there's several counties that are looking at doing this exact same thing. What this does, it'll actually have a little small box or kiosk set up in the lobby, there's a picture of it right there. You can't see it on the big screen. What you'll do is you'll go up there, the participant will go up there, use your fingerprint, we'll say, there you go, Lee again, thank you for coming. And then uh, it'll say if you have to do twenty four seven, thank you for showing up, it's your time to blow. Your PBT, there's a camera that recognizes Lee to make sure that it's the correct person that's there for the PBT. Um, you'll take the breath test and move on. Um, nice thing with this is that it actually accepts your cash, if the person can go up there with their dollar, put it in the machine. Get the receipt, saves all that time of having to. Take the money, go write a receipt, bring it back, there's a lot of receipts for a dollar bill, I know Cindy has seen those many, many, many times. Quarters, quarters, and those oftentimes come up, um, so that'll help out with that. Uh, there's some other neat features on there too that we'll probably have to look into here in the future. Um, some of the case management stuff that we've talked about in uh, this machine is capable of doing that. Uh, some of that, I should say. Yeah, court reminders, like say, Lee comes in, first PBT, you can have it set up, I like, I like using Lee, here's an example. So, when you come in for your PBT, um, you scan your fingerprint and say, yep, that's me, I'm here for my PBT, you can say, all right, you have a reminder, you have court on Tuesday at nine AM. Can help out with some of that. That's actually very well. For. Yep, yeah, there's a lot of uh, probation officers that will use that and have people come in and check in. So that's another part that we can work with on them is probation officers can set it up to work with them, so there's a lot of different. Things and options that this can do.
Are you saying that there's certain people that come in for testing that have memory loss? Their own days.
Yeah, sometimes they forget what day it is and what uh time they gotta be in court and all the little reminders are definitely.
I have other two questions about that one, does it take a credit card?
Does.
Does, and third, if they fail it, then what happens?
So we have it, uh, you can set it up however you want to, uh, I think how we set it up is. Is when you blow, here, your first where you come on, it starts a video, it videos you. And then it takes, make sure you're fingerprinting and make sure you're blowing to there. For identifying you, but if you, when you blow it and then fail, uh, would you have it set up to do whatever you wanted to do? But it's what most companies do is have a pop up a screen saying, please check into the jail for a retest and send us an email. It can send you a text, but you don't, you don't have to text you, but you gotta send you an email to jail. And then it's in the lobby of the jail anyways, and then you name the person.
Yep, some, some states and counties actually have it in a different location than their jail, you might have it in the courthouse, or they might have it in. Uh, police department or uh just another building somewhere, and you're supposed to take your receipt and check in, and if not, they'll end up with a warrant for that person, so.
There is a, I, I'm sure there would, would be, but.
So this would be set up in the lobby and it doesn't have to be manned?
Doesn't have to be manned, that's something that, when they blow in there, of course the breath is all contained, and it's not something that. Uh, correctional officers standing two, three feet away from a person, um, essentially getting. Spent in their breath blown on them, yeah.
And they fully understand already before they even blow it. They might be guilty or might, might not. But they might question the accuracy of the test.
Yep, and like I say, that's where we can set up our policy on how we want to do that, do we want to pull them in and then do another PBT at that time, or do we want to use the machine? There's different things that we can, we can do.
Does this, um, this proposal, does it come with an agreement, like a service agreement, that they come out and validate the machine to make sure that it's accurate?
Forty or forty five.
Cause I see it, this company's in Minnesota, right, Neodyne, Minnesota, do they come over here and actually do the service work?
Yep.
If you're actually working with them, ten towns here in South Florida, but the legal team in Minnehaha has drawn up the official paperwork that. It'll be done this week, he said, that it'll be signed and be.
Is the, uh, is the pay, I, I was reading through this, is the paper a captive item or that, that can only be gotten through them? Or the straw can only be gotten through them?
No, I notice.
Seventy five, seventy five dollars for ten thousand straws, so it's not, it's not real.
They mentioned it's pretty much the same straw, you go to McDonald's and, yeah, just a, just a regular straw.
Do you, do you have, um, do you have room in your budget for this item currently?
It is not a budgeted item, but I do have room in the budget because our, our jail numbers have been low uh for this to cover it, so. Like I said, the twenty four seven is also a offender pay program, so it's paid by itself. Um, I wouldn't take this out of the twenty four seven budget, I'd have to take that out of the jail budget here for the first time, but if you have twenty two. Participants on there a day, it, it's a, it's a wash, it pays for itself. Typically, if you look at our numbers, we're in the fifties to sixties. Yeah.
Yeah, so we've seen, once we purchased the kiosk with dollars. Right, for a year.
Yeah, it's a service agreement that they work with them, if something breaks on it, they take care of it.
So they, they come out every four months and calibrate this thing at cost two eighty five. And we, we're trained to do that.
And we were trained to do the calibrating of it every forty-five days to make sure the calibration is good.
But they still have to come out every four months, right?
Yeah.
So many.
They're the certified. Yeah.
So this kiosk is sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year?
A year.
Okay. And what is our return on investment on, on this thing? Have we done the math on it?
Like I say, if there's twenty-two participants a day.
Okay.
It's a wash. It's even.
Even out.
Anything above and beyond that, we're.
And do we have twenty-two participants a day?
Yeah, typically we've had fifty to sixty people on the PBTs.
We're pushing seventy or a lot of the numbers shouldn't be going. The judges are really pushing us to start the PBTs, but a lot of counties haven't done that. Can't just blow in your face. So we're looking at alternatives of how we can safely do it and we're, we're right at seventy.
We're starting to see a lot of people that are on the twenty-four seven would be PBT, repeat offending. It's there, there's not that accountability, it's not there right now because of the twenty-four seven program.
And then the other question I have on this is I don't see a total that you're asking for, for.
Page three, it's three.
Sixteen, two.
And does that include the, the straws and the printer paper and?
Yep.
All this other stuff that's included in the PBT? Okay, I'll make a motion to.
And I'll second that.
Like I say, secondly, our, our state attorney wanted to be here to help share her side of it too from that, but of course she's got court today.
We're just leasing this for one year, right? One year.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
So we have a motion by Bandus and second by Waterman. Any other discussion?
I think the fact that we have not been able to do this since what, first March or whenever it was?
March thirteenth.
I mean, it's, uh, we realized, how, how are you going to get those that you said there's about seventy that should be on the program now that aren't? How are you going to, you're going to call them all up?
That's part of the process, just like when we started the UAs again. It takes a little bit. We got to work with the courts. We got to work with their attorneys to try to get them here, get them enrolled. Like I said, seventy people we're going to have to meet with that are going to have to get their fingerprints, their pictures, identify them, get them enrolled in the program. So it's, it's going to be some work to get it up and going, but once it's up and going. I'm going to say around a month for everybody to, it'll slowly get geared up and get going.
I'd say at least a month.
Yes, it will be mandated by, through the courts and then they're going to.
So Cindy, my motion is to. Is to go forth with this in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred.
Yep.
Is that right, Brad? Yeah, okay. Right.
All right, Charlie's okay with that? All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. All right, item number thirteen, action to hire a criminal civil support coordinator utilizing a pool of previous applicants.
We have, uh, one person in our office that is resigning to be a stay-at-home mom. So she's going to stay on with us until we can hire somebody else and replace her. So that's what we're looking, got a whole pool of applicants about three inches thick when we opened it up here this spring, so.
So she's the reason why you still have.
Yep.
Got it. Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. All right, very good, Brad. Great to hear your report. We'll be back on track again. All right, item number fifteen, action to approve a resolution to cancel outdated warrants. To, this is a list that is prepared annually by the Treasurer's Office of warrants that we have issued to various companies and individuals. Mostly for refunds on motor vehicle type of things and they range from. Refund of three dollars and sixty-seven cents all the way up to six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty cents. We've made numerous attempts to contact these people to get these checks cashed and we have, this is where we're at. We started out with a much bigger list. Um, so we have to, by law, we're required to turn this over to the state of South Dakota's unclaimed property. Uh, the checks are totaling one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-two cents. So then, in the future, anybody on this list has the ability to go to the state treasurer's website and apply for their unclaimed property. Once their name is on the list or published in the paper.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. So at this point, they cannot do it at the county level anymore. They will need to go through. Yep, it's out of our hands at this point. Any other discussion? Um, I believe she does this every year. I don't, I cannot tell you how. Yeah, um, she did not, she did not give me that information. I know, I know we do it annually. I would, um, all of our checks that go out have a date on them that they're good for a certain amount of time. I don't remember what it is right now, so. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Um, number seventeen, I did have a conversation with Jamie and yesterday and everything is still good in Cottington, but we will leave that on about a burn ban going forward. As the fall continues on and see what, what sort of weather conditions we end up with. Item number eighteen, action to approve claims for payment.
And these are our credit card claims that always come at this time of the month and we pay them to avoid service charges. These are all made payable to Visa Relia Bank. The first one is one thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty cents. And that was for the video camera that we are using in this office and supplies for West Nile prevention. Another claim to Visa Relia Bank for sixty dollars for the Register of Deeds office and that was membership dues for Priya. Uh, the last one is one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents and that is also Visa Relia Bank. Uh, part of that is an instructor school for the detention center and travel for the sheriff's office. One final one to, um, Visa Relia Bank and that was for supplies for the emergency management office for a meeting, I believe. And the final one is our, whoops, there's two more, I'm sorry. Final one is to the Watertown City Finance Office in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. And that is for the July nine-one-one surcharge collections that we remit to the city each month. The final one is something new. During the primary election, when a ballot would come back to us postage due because the voter did not put enough postage on it. We were taking money out of petty cash to pay the mailman every day. And I was a little worried that we would not have enough petty cash to keep up with the number of ballots that we mailed out this time. Although I did put out a PSA that it does cost a dollar twenty to mail your ballot back. And many people are utilizing the secure drop box at the back door of the courthouse. But after talking to the post office, they will take a check and put it on account for us over there. And they will deduct those postage due fees from that amount and they will bill or they'll give us a daily statement of how many were paid, so. Um, and then at the end of the election cycle, if there are funds still left in there, all we have to do is request to have those remitted back to us. So, um, just so that we were not using cash to pay the mailman daily, it just made sense to. And other counties did this in the primary also. Previously, we have never had this many mail out ballots. We've never had to deal with anything like this except in this year. Anyway, we cut a check to the Watertown Post Office for five hundred dollars. In the primary, we spent over three hundred dollars, so I'm hoping that this will be sufficient. I'm hoping people, um, have had enough experience now that they know those envelopes do need postage on them. Lots of people thought they were posted free and just, and the mail, the post office is not allowed to not deliver these to us. Ballots have to be delivered whether there's postage on them or not, so hopefully this will take care of it. Anyway, that was a five hundred dollar check to the Watertown Post Office.
I hope it's approved.
By Johnson, second by Gable. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Put postage on.
Oh, we've even had people ask us if they need to put postage on it, if they throw it in the drop, in the drop box. So they are aware of it. There is a heightened awareness, so.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number nineteen, action, possible discussion on COVID nineteen practices, procedures and policy. I think we have something that we may have to just add. Natalie will work on that this next week in case situations come up that might affect just. Certain offices and not all, so we may come up with something that is more specific that just that office might have a different procedure than others.
I think maybe we have the Zoom in place too and as numbers continue to, to go up, we may have to, as a commission, look at maybe. Re-implementing that too for us.
Yeah, but we still are open to the public, so.
Right.
It's, it's just, if there may be situations in certain offices where there's a possibility of a positive or something that we'd want to take extra precautions, so. All right, Natalie will work on that for us and have something next week. Um, item number twenty, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Nothing today.
All right, item number twenty-one, action to approve personnel changes.
I have one of those, I believe. Uh, Deputy Sheriff Rusty Matthews is due his anniversary step increase from step eleven to step twelve, twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents per hour.
So move.
Question by Waterman, second by Gable. Any discussion?
Cindy, I see a lot of these come through with education incentives on them. It seems like almost every one of them either.
Um, we have a policy that if any employee has a extended, um, has any kind of degree. Post-high school, they are allowed ten cents an extra per hour. They do have to provide us with a copy of their diploma or whatever they received, um, and.
So he's never had the education? He's been an employee in Cottington County?
He has, but we just put it on here every time so that reminds us that we need to add ten cents to it.
So it's not a new.
It's not, no, it's not new. It's just a reminder to us to add that ten cents.
That explains it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Number twenty-two, action to approve travel request.
Um, I have several of those. First one is the Highway Department. The superintendent was requesting authorization to. Attend a superintendent's meeting and class at the end of this month and year. He's also requesting to attend the annual regional local road conference in October. Uh, the emergency management director is requesting authorization to attend a field force command and planning for executives class. Uh, later this week.
All right, motion by Waterman, second by Gable. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, that motion carries. Um, item number twenty-three, public notices. Don't really have anything unless someone can think of it. Tonight, there will be the candidate forum, but that has now been put on virtual. So you can watch it on GovTV or the Chamber of Commerce Facebook page.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock. It'll be on the Facebook. All right, does anyone else have anything for public notices? Uh, old business, item number twenty-four.
I'm sure, just real quick, since next week we're going to be approving the budget. And we've discussed the amendments before, just I'll, I'll try to send that out, but just to refresh everybody's memory. So we're talking about, we talked a little bit about the welfare office and that, uh, systems of care. Community case manager. And so Sarah gave us one alternative and that, that cost would be in the, by the twenty, twenty-eight, thirty thousand dollar area. And then, um, two possible, um. Uh, consultation and, you know, agreements with consultants. One would be the, the wage compensation study. If we want to come back to that next year. And then, um, another, and that's roughly, I want to say that was about thirty thousand dollars. And then, um, another roughly thirty thousand dollars for a potential criminal justice study. So those are, those are the, uh, the things. So I'll, I'll put that together. So I've already put it together once and talked about it a little bit, but I just want to refresh everybody's memories since we're going to be talking about it next week for the budget.
All right, any other old business? Hearing none, how about new business? No new business? How about for the open? I don't think we had anybody call in. The girls would let us know for any public comments. Um, I will just mention Cindy will be more than likely on the news briefing for, on Thursday afternoon. And she'll be able to explain to the greater audience, hopefully, the procedures with the early voting and absentee ballots.
And thank you to the public opinion and to the radio stations for getting the PSA out. Um, we had so many phone calls yesterday morning. People just are asking how they can get their ballots delivered to the courthouse. If we mailed them out, if they can come in here and vote. Um, there were just a lot, there was a lot of confusion. So, thank you.
So then the news briefing, it's the one that the city does for the, part of the COVID task force.
Right.
Thing.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's also on GovTV or is that?
On Facebook, I believe.
Okay, that's right.
Okay.
And it's, uh, usually three, typically somewhere three thirty.
Okay.
That all depends, so we'll. Get that figured out. Um, Lee and I did attend the annual commissioners convention and we had over half of the counties that were. Well, actually thirty-five at our business meeting. So we had a good turnout for that and it was good information that we got. They did have it virtual. Were any of you able to jump on virtual?
It's, some of the sessions were virtual.
Other than that, we didn't have too much with our resolutions. There was only a couple of them and that were passed and moved on. There's no bills being wrote at this point. It was just in support of some, a couple of different things. So, uh, I see we had a letter here from Lake Area Zoological Society. Everyone have.
Thank you, letter.
Yeah, thank you, letter for that. Uh, we do have a need to go into executive session under legal or no, no, contractual matter, so number two. So Natalie would like to rally us up for that.
Will there be any business after that, Madam Chair?
No, I do not believe so. All right, so anybody want to make motions to go into?
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second by Waterman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Can you stop the meeting, Natalie? Can you stop the meeting?